Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30. It is the regular council meeting for September 12th. But can you please do a roll call?
Councilwoman Aaron here. Mayor Portembliss.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Rorback.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Greyston.
I am there, thank you. At this time, I'm going to provide the invitation and then we're going to follow that with a pledge, and I ask everyone to stand if you're ready. I pray for guidance to satisfy the needs to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions. Please guide us so this meeting can be productive, let us be effective and decisive. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as pieces of a whole rather than as individuals. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, okay, first up is approval of the agenda. We do have some additions, so I am going to start and ask if I can get a motion, please, to approve the following agendas under the consent agreement. Number one, the 2023 Winter Maintenance Agreement with Oakland County. Number two, the Tentative Labor Agreement with the fire union. And number three, the Tentative Labor Agreement with the police union. Can I get a motion to approve those, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would make the motion, but are we also adding your SEMCOG representative seat?
We can't.
Okay, I will.
That would not be under the consent agenda, though.
Okay, so those three to the consent agenda, and then the replacement of your seat, would that be reports?
Communications.
Okay, so communications, one.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Your Honor.
Yes, a second. All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to add these items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to public hearings. First up, we have the special approval of the Costco fuel station expansion on Stevenson. And at this time, I'm going to open the meeting to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak specifically on this item. There will be a time later to speak on anything, but at this point, if anybody wants to speak about the Costco fuel station, please.
Good evening, public members. My name is Julie Anderson. I'm barhousing consulting engineer. I'm Costco's planning consultant for the project. With me is our team, who stand Caitlin Burnett, Costco real estate manager; Adam Bergdahl, traffic consultant, just a traffic engineer with Kittles &amp; Associates; and Chris Doctor, the warehouse manager for the Madison and Costco. Costco is interested in expanding their existing gas station to add six additional dispensers and then extend the canopy to cover those dispensers. The intent of the expansion is to reduce vehicle fuel queues and provide a more efficient fuel purchasing experience for members. So with that, I will, the rest of the team are good to answer any questions.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the public? All right, at this point, I'm going to close. Roll call to the public, and I'm going to ask, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I recommend the consequence of special approval based upon special approval review standards and criteria in section 10.01.
All right, thank you, is there support?
No.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion among council?
Your Honor.
Please.
Just a question, I know we have representatives in the audience. With the shift towards electric vehicles over the next decade or so, the additional pump space here, would that be convertible if you were changing them to plug stations? Or would it just be a lot more pumps with less usage down the line? All right, we're not there today, but I think the goal was, what, 50% by like 2030?
So Bert. Sorry, could you go? Yeah. So right now, since the project is just the additional dispensers, help process queues, there isn't an intent or any movement at the moment to install new vehicle chargers. If they were to do that in the future, it would be a separate system, like somewhere else on the site. It wouldn't be something that you would be able to convert the additional, the dispensers to a vehicle to a different system.
Your Honor.
Please.
So can you explain to whoever's watching, for the record, what a synopsis and heading terms, what you plan to do?
So we plan to install six new dispensers into the queue on the southermost side of the site.
Dispensers as gasoline pumps?
Yes, yeah, gasoline pumps. And it would be, one dispenser has two fueling positions, so one pump is one dispenser. And then we would just be expanding the canopy to cover those dispensers. And then we're also installing what we call remote fills, which allows for the fuel truck to fuel, deliver fuel to the site in existing underground storage tanks outside of the vehicle queue. So this will help, you know, avoid vehicle conflict during fuel drops, allow for more processing of vehicles through the queue and reduce queues outside.
So would that, Your Honor, will that decrease the traffic that I've seen out on the John Arrows at some point?
That, that's a good question. I would have to defer to Adam from Kittleson, traffic consultant. It's very difficult to do that.
Sorry.
It's Adam Bergdahl, Fuel Center Associates. So the additional fueling positions, as well as the extended, the queuing area is also proposed to be extended as part of the, as part of the improvement, will allow for traffic to be contained as you're approaching the canopy. And it will also cause traffic to actually cycle through the fueling operation much quicker. So we're actually, we generally see with an expansion like this, the service rate to be improved so that the queuing of the vehicles will actually, the duration will actually decrease. So you actually see, while you might see some more vehicles because, you know, somebody might not want to fuel up because it's busy and it's overflowing, and they just don't want to deal with it right now, you'll see those people actually, you know, now able to be served. So you'll see more vehicles being processed, but they're doing so at actually quicker rates so that the queue does shrink from a length perspective because of the improved service.
Your Honor, so when did you come about this conclusion? I mean, how long down the road, back, did you say like, you know, did you keep a watch of it last two, three years? I mean, why now, all of a sudden, you think it's used more?
So, you know, gas operations and working with Costco warehouse, you know, alert us to when, you know, we're having problems on site. And so we had, my firm has collected data on behalf of Costco for this type of improvement for nearly the last 20 years. And so while we did observe queuing at this site and then projected, you know, what the increase in traffic would be, and, you know, looked at how the increased service interval would actually improve the efficiency of the site, I think we collected data late last year or earlier this year to actually quantify that. But through history, through our dozens and dozens of sites that we've done before and after studies on, we typically see, I believe, let me get you a real number here, about a 50% reduction in weekday typical PM peak hour queuing, and then also a 35% reduction on Saturdays. And that's the queuing and dwelling duration. So you have less idling, less waiting per se.
One last question, if I didn't ask you, but does that mean you have to put new tanks in, or how's that worked then? Or that's not affected by the gasoline tanks?
Right, the tank itself doesn't impact the service interval, it's actually the fueling positions. So when we add six new pumps, it's 12 new fueling positions. And what's out there today is 16. So you'll have more fueling positions drawing off of, I think there's a tank improvement, but drawing off the same tanks.
So then it'd be more dropping off of fuel, because it's going to be used more, right?
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question, or council? Please. I noticed in your peak hour trips, you only did PM and peak in.
Correct.
Was there a reason for that and not including daytime?
Yep, so, yeah, the, normally when you're doing a traffic study, we look at AM peak hour, PM peak hour. Because Costco, the warehouse itself, is not really open during the typical AM peak hour, which is typically between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. We did look at that piece because the Costco itself isn't under operation, isn't in operation. But then the PM peak hour is typically 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And this particular one is actually from 5:20 to 6:20. And then Saturday tends to be Costco's peak day of service, no surprise there. And this one was from 1:00 to 2:00 PM.
And you did this study for 30 days, or just, I just see October to early November, like, was this a week study, or how long?
So the data was collected for a day, I believe, a typical day. And, but the data that we use for the growth and the before and after study that we have is from data from all around the country for similar expansions.
That was my next question. How did you get the expected increase? What was the ratio that you used, or the formula that you used to get that?
Yep, so this is based upon data that we had collected from before and after. So the growth in peak hour trips, we use, what's, seven, data from seven different sites where we actually did collect data before and then after, saw what the expected increase is. And that's for generally, one of those sites expands from 12 to 22 fueling positions, and then the others are 16 to 24 fueling positions, which is similar to our expansion, which is 16 to 28 in magnitude. So that, that does result in an increase, as I mentioned, in the peak hour trips that are generated. However, because of the increased service interval, we're able to actually process that traffic much more efficiently with the 12 extra fueling positions.
So of all the Costcos, only these two states have it? California and Oregon are the only two with additional bays or ponds?
No, those are the ones that we had collected for, with this type of data. So this type of improvement happening nationwide quite regularly, but the data that we had counted were before and after was in for this one, California and Oregon. And then, I believe, for the queuing studies, also the same.
Yeah, so same, yes.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor. So one quick question, and then one that might take 30 seconds of explanation after that. So the first question, the easy one, these will have the long hoses that can operate on either side of the vehicle?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And then the longer one, I see that we're removing 23 parking stalls. You still are about, call it 100 more than necessary. Are you making any changes or enhancements to improve the flow of traffic within the parking lot to be able to push out on the road easier, given the additional bays?
So the proposed plan extends the vehicle stacking area. And if you've been to the site recently, you'll notice that some areas have been chained off in order to help divert traffic and funnel the entry point. This is essentially going to be memorialized through that expansion with the provision of curb areas and some landscape medians to help funnel traffic on the ingress to where it's supposed to be, and also expanding the depth of area that can be provided there.
Any questions for council? So I have something, so you talked about chains, I know there's cones there, so should this get approved, that's going to be removed and it will all flow in?
That's the intent.
Okay. Costco gas opens at 6:00, even though the warehouse itself is not open until 10:00. Do you do any studies for people who stop off between 6:00 and 9:00?
We did not, and, but we do, we do look at the hourly transaction data as we're pulling this information together. We try to correlate that with kind of the maximum, the busiest times of the day. And then also when we're looking at that, not only the peak hour of our generator, of the gas or the Costco itself, but we're looking at the traffic conditions surrounding, generally speaking, 6:00 AM would be before the standardized normal peak hour, morning time period, which we'll follow there shortly after, you know, typically within that 7:00 to 9:00 AM period of adjacent street.
And then one last double question. So if this is approved, you're going to put these in, and then if down the road, you're going to put in some kind of charger for electric vehicles, it would be in a completely different area? Has that been thought of where it would be?
I'll have to ask that one to bar council.
And along those lines, there is a tiny, tiny little bike rack there. Will that be expanded, or when will that be expanded, for those of us who like to enter?
So to answer the first question about the EV stalls, so just typically, the EV stalls would be in a different area of the site. It hasn't been evaluated for this site yet. Just typically Costco, when they do put them in, they found that they don't typically get utilized very often, and so they end up having to take them out. So right now, there isn't, like I said, an intent or drive to install them at the warehouse, but if they were to install them in the future, if there was, you know, an interest for them or a need for them, they would like to be somewhere else on the site, probably closer to the warehouse or somewhere near like a transformer or something like that. So we would have to look, it evaluates it on a site-by-site basis, so it would probably require further evaluation for the site to determine the best location for them to be located.
Do any of the Costcos up in Michigan have charging stations?
I'm not sure, to be honest. I don't believe so, not to my knowledge, but I would have to, I'd have to double check.
What about throughout the country?
There are some Costco stations in the country that do have electric vehicle charging stations.
But you're not sure about Michigan?
No, I'm not sure about Michigan.
All right, and what about expanding the bike rack area?
Um, can, sorry, can you elaborate? Is it near the entrance to the warehouse? Is that the bike rack?
No, it's not potentially too close, it's off to the side.
Okay, but.
You could maybe four bikes there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we haven't looked at that either, but it's definitely something that we can go back and look at and look at expanding.
When do you think you would be looking at that?
We can go back and do that as soon as possible. There could be a potential to do it even before the expansion as a separate project or as part of the expansion.
I think that would be great, if you could do it as part of the expansion. When, is it that you're, if it was approved now, when would you be building fuel stations?
Right now, we're tracking to start in the spring, around April or May after the winter season, but that schedule is dependent on getting the appropriate permits and everything from the city as well as the state.
So if you were to put in the bike racks, expand that, then that would be a great time to have a go in, in the spring. Are there any other questions for anyone on council?
I have one, yeah.
Mr. Wright?
You guys aren't installing the electric stalls in the stores, but do you sell them at the stores? That's a joke.
I don't want you to.
Okay, just thought I'd ask about that. So basically, this, it sounds like this would help with the flow of traffic at the end of the day. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
And you guys kind of have it already logistically mapped out, it's just you need our approval to do just the gas part?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah, so currently, right now, on 13 Mile, there's an entrance and exit on the eastbound side of the park, where the fuel stations are at. So what effect will this additional pumps have on that traffic there? Because coming in, off 13 Mile and exiting, it's only two lanes, and it becomes like a bottleneck there to get on 13, because there's no traffic light at all, and then the cars have to wait to get on 13 Mile. So if you have more fuel stations there, then they're waiting longer to exit onto a 13 Mile road.
For that, I'll go back to you.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes, excellent question. So while there is an expected increase in just overall general traffic that's generated by this, majority of the traffic that interacts with the gas also interacts directly with the warehouse. So you'll get gas, go to the warehouse, complete your shopping, and then you can get your car fueled up and you can go. So there's that, there's other trip types that, so that's an internal trip, a trip between the gas and Costco. There's another couple of trip types passed by, it's averted trips, which are really trips that don't actually add new traffic to the surrounding roadway network. So what we're increased, what the expected increase in traffic external to the site is 21 vehicles per hour during the PM peak hour, 27 on a Saturday. So that's in round numbers, you know, a vehicle every three seconds or so. I know exactly the intersection that you're talking about right now. It's challenged today, and I believe that's exacerbated by the I-75 construction, you know, and, you know, the underpass there, it's necked down to a single lane versus two lanes in that direction. So it's, it's a bit of a challenge right now, but we're hoping that, that if that project is completed, that that can be resolved.
Your Honor, just one last question, sorry about that. So you can say here today, you can guarantee there won't be any type of contamination with more pumps being used on that site.
I, we'll have some questions.
So I, I mean, I can't say 100% guaranteed, but I will say Costco is.
Give me a percentage.
What?
Give me a percentage, then, you can't go 100%.
I don't know that I can give a percentage. All I, all I can say is, when it comes to installing the tanks and the dispensers and the additional piping, Costco's design is state-of-the-art. It exceeds, you know, federal standards for leak detection. All piping is double-walled, so that if there is a leak, it goes back to some where an alarm goes off and the system shuts down. So everything is state-of-the-art, it's all brand-new. Materials are all the current materials, and we do have to undergo certain permitting requirements as well as inspections, soil testing, things like that, to make sure that there is no sort of, you know, environmental contamination or anything associated with the project.
Anything else, Mr. Soltis?
No, thank you.
Anyone else on council? All right. Seeing as there's no further discussion, I would like to see if Councilwoman Aaron and Councilwoman Fleming, if you would be able to amend this to include the bike racks, the addition of bike racks.
Your Honor.
Please.
I was just addressing the motion that it's for public health safety welfare, adding to the bikes, if that the CED department has the ability to approve, or if Costco approved the plan for installation.
All right, Councilwoman Aaron, if you can take with us.
I would like to make a motion to ban person just in my house.
All right, wonderful. And I'm going to have our city director work directly with Costco to come up with a number, but I would say that if you are going from.
Your Honor.
16 to 28, then we'll start that number or more for bikes. Yes, Mr. Wright?
Could I, I don't know if I'm allowed to support or board, can we just add that we recommend they add a bike rack instead of saying they have to? I guess I'm a little concerned about the word. I was saying they have to, or we're recommending it?
The way it works is it's a condition of the government's approval, which the council is allowed to do.
And so for that, if someone from Costco could take the podium for a moment and let us know if you would be amenable to this, or if this is going to be something that would not work for you.
Yep. Costco is amenable to it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright, is that satisfied?
As long as like, it's, I agree that as long as we're not making it ambiguous, like, I don't know if we could do that, to be quite honest. I guess that's why I was glad, fine.
So if we make it conditional on the bike racks, they have to put them in. If we recommend it, they don't have to. And this is where staff will work with them on the details. That doesn't mean we approve it today, the bike racks have to be up tomorrow, but they will come up with a realistic timeline for this. And I trust that staff in Costco will come up with something realistic. Is there any other discussion?
Something I don't plan, is there a number of additional, like a percentage of increase in bike rack space?
I'd like to see it in line with the number of gas tanks that are, that fueling stations more, if possible, but at a minimum, in line with what they're putting in.
Is there a ratio between pump or bike rack?
They're, well.
Could you give me a number, we can make sure.
I feel, I feel like there are four bike racks, I feel that there are spaces for four bike racks. It's tiny.
Okay.
It's tiny, and if we have over 100 parking spaces there, you can fit 10 bikes in one parking space. So for them to add on another 10 or 15 bike racks is reasonable.
Spaces for bikes or bike racks?
Spaces for bikes.
Okay, just want to make sure that the department.
I bikes, for those of you who aren't aware, I bike, and I bike to Costco, and I do shopping there, and I fit them in my bags, so.
I just wanted to make sure that we're fulfilling that, that's for council.
I do, I do. Mr. Rorback? Okay, anyone else, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve this with the amendment regarding the bike racks, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
All right, thank you. Motion carries 6.1. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone in public to talk about anything that they would like. I said we keep it to three minutes, give your name, address, and affiliation with the city. Back door is open. Seeing no press, door is closed, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have the four items that were initially on the agenda, and then we have the three additions. Now, city attorney, should I be reading these out?
For the consent agenda?
Yeah, just reading out what they are for the public?
We already read them off, so I can post it, so I will just.
Okay, all right.
Your Honor, could we read them, we want some, we just had it.
Sure. So we originally had four items, and then we've just added this evening, number one, the 2023 Winter Maintenance Agreement with Oakland County, number two, the Tentative Labor Agreement with Fire Union, and number three, the Tentative Labor Agreement with Police Union. So in total, there are seven items. Is there any item that someone from council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the client of the library advisory board member.
Yes.
Is there, that if council chooses, council can appoint someone now, does that need to be removed, or from the consent agenda, or just?
That's just, that's just to accept the person's decline. If you want to add something to that, then it's a legitimate.
That would be a separate agenda item, which I guess we could prevent a communication to. Would you want to do that? Yes, okay. So is there any, this is just accepting, we're declining it. Is there any, any item that anyone would like to pull? All right, this is the first time we've done the consent agenda. Do I ask for a note, or do we just assume that it's just?
We have to get a motion.
Okay. All right, so we need to do that part of it. Okay, can I get a motion to accept this other item, tell me it's consent agenda?
Your Honor, I vote that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, there's support. Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? None, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries for all seven. Next up, we have communications. First up is, I, we have recently found out that I am still somehow the SEMCOG representative. I thought that was changed a couple of years ago, so I'm going to be resigning from that. And I've spoken with Councilwoman Fleming, he is interested in taking the role of SEMCOG, so I would like a motion to accept my resignation and the reappointment of Councilwoman Fleming. There's, yes.
So.
Thank you, is there support? All right, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
There was, at the time that I was, I was the SEMCOG representative, and I don't know if that has changed, because I voted in the SEMCOG General Assembly, and I've done things, so I'm not sure if there's a confusion about the actual. So I'm not sure if there's a confusion about the actual, like, progress of that, or...
I thought that you were the representative, and then staff reached out to me the other day and said that it was me.
SEMCOG staff?
No, no, from our staff. Do you, I can amend the motion, or I can request that we amend the motion that you're the representative and Councilwoman Fleming is the alternate?
Your Honor, Councilwoman Fleming is welcome to be the representative. I just wanted to make sure where the right person is resigning.
I have, Counselwoman Rorab against the council representative, and I have Dave Soltis
as well.
Okay, I didn't think it was me. I don't know why I received that email.
I just have a point to add. I don't know what your timing, did we throw it out to all council for that, or you just ...
Do you have a date?
I think for...
A date for when that was done? Because I thought this was a couple of years ago.
It wasn't, no, we do it every November. We reappoint in November. In the, I'm sorry, in the Agers.
Your Honor, I just have to remove my motion. We can move on with our lives.
All right. Then, okay, motion is removed. All right. Counselwoman Aaron wanted to add an appointment. Is that something you can do now? Do we need to wait to do that if that's new thing?
If there's a maker or a second, we can do it now.
Counselwoman Aaron, do you have somebody you want to appoint to the local board?
I do. I'd like to promote Jennifer Nagel, service to alternate, with the seat being coming vacant August 31st, 2023.
All right, thank you. There's court.
Aye.
I second.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, those against, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. And then next up, we have a report from the City Attorney regarding the display and placement of flags on city-owned bike holes outside and inside the city. All right, can I get a motion from counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution regarding the display and placement of flags on or in city buildings and city flags.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I will support.
Thank you. This has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, those against, say no. Motion carries. Last up, we have the ordinances, the CED Director, the re- resuming request, her ordinance 2187 for 29022 Stevenson, the removal from primary caregiver marijuana grow overlay district. This is the first reading.
Staff request to remove the three parcels of land from 29022 Stevenson, how it from the caregiver marijuana overlay district. In 2019 and 2020, City Council adopted a medical marijuana facilities adult use ordinance. This marijuana explicit, this marijuana ordinance exclusively limits the establishments of medical and recreational facilities to those in the M1 and M2 districts. Following the adoption of medical marijuana facilities and adult use marijuana facilities ordinance, the applicable parcels were included in a loud parcel map that automatically changes when properties are rezoned and no longer meet the ordinance's requirements. Under a completely separate ordinance, the city also created a new zoning for caregivers, which included a caregiver marijuana grow overlay district. While the boundaries of this caregiver overlay district were intended to mirror that of the allowed parcels map, the overlay district map is technically a standalone map with separate zoning regulations. The caregiver overlay district text does not state that caregivers must be located in the M1, M2 district, but only that a registered primary caregiver shall not cultivate medical marijuana at a parcel that is not included in the caregiver marijuana grow overlay district. The subject set pertaining to this case are the three parcels that were rezoned in front of Cole's Place, the property, at the property owner's request. City Council recently rezoned these properties from M1 to B3. The rezoning of the parcels to B3, City Council effectively removed these properties from the allowed parcel map associated with the medical marijuana and adult use marijuana facilities ordinance. However, the subject properties are still technically in the caregiver overlay district. City staff is requesting that the subject parcels be removed from the caregiver marijuana grow overlay district in order to reflect their new underlying B3 zoning designation. Based on the Planning Commission's findings and recommendations, staff recommends that City Council adopt ordinance 2187 upon first reading and schedule a public hearing for the October 10th City Council meeting.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I have the Council adopts ordinance 2187 upon first reading and schedules public hearing for the October 10th, 2022 Council meeting.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just the question, when we discussed the Planning Commission, it seemed like there was a level of urgency. Is the 10th going to do it quick enough, or should it be the 26th?
We need time to schedule a public hearing, so it's going to be the 10th, and that should be okay.
That's okay.
We don't have an intercom or anything in the wings at this moment. That I know of.
Thank you. Your Honor, what sensibility? Ask for this.
The concern is that right now, someone can set up there. So until this is approved at the second reading, so between now and the second reading, someone sets up there, we can't, we can't stop with the ramp up. Is there any other discussion?
And the main issue for that concern is not necessarily to have our assault, but if someone in another area outside the designated zone tried to get into that position and make the argument, well, there's an area within the zone that's not consecutive with what we're doing, current what we're doing. We don't want to even repulse them to try to serve that in the ordinance.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, those against, say no.
No.
Motion carries six, one. So that would conclude this, except I have found the email from this morning at 10:30, and according to SEMCOG, to answer your question, SEMCOG actually has me as the delegate and you as the alternate. So we, as a council, must have made a vote that somehow didn't make its way to SEMCOG. So Counselwoman Rorab, do you want to be the, I'm going to resign as the delegate, but do you want to be the delegate or the alternate?
I'll be the alternate. I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Counselwoman Fleming, or Mr. Soltis, did you want to be?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so Counselwoman Fleming or Soltis?
Also.
So, the motion regarding accepting my resignation and the appointment of Councilwoman Fleming to the role of delegate.
Your Honor, is this, I guess the question to the clerk's office, is this just, we need to let SEMCOG know what we voted on in November, or do we need another vote?
That would be my opinion, that we just need to notify SEMCOG that our representatives change, but if you want to change the representatives, then we need to vote.
The mayor wishes to resign, but you better replace somebody on that.
She's not on there. They already appointed some of them.
So if you're changing one of the two people you already voted, you need to have the motion to keep the same two.
So we voted, and somehow SEMCOG doesn't know that, so we want SEMCOG to know that Counselwoman Rorab is staying as the alternate, but Counselwoman Fleming is wanting to be the delegate. Those are what you...
But from my understanding, it has a, you're the representative, and Counselman Soltis is the, that's not...
SEMCOG.
SEMCOG has, I understand it's public court, I mean, but the city clerk has you and Soltis, Counselwoman Rorab.
Warbuck.
Okay, Warbuck, okay.
I have a question. Can I raise this question to the clerk? What, you're getting that information from the minutes of the summer meeting, correct?
I can look it up and say, it was a second, a person meeting in November of 2021.
If you just wanted to know if I...
Read the, the person we...
Just send the, that we're saying doesn't circle and something.
Well, I don't have a problem with November, it was in fact, one, one, something, that would be, can you tell me who it is?
Yeah, just take a look. It sounds like it's Counselwoman Rorab, Counselwoman Soltis, and Counselman Soltis is what they give you. You, so perhaps it should be a motion to accept my resignation and Counselman Soltis' resignation, so that we're both completely taken off, and Counselwoman Rorab is willing to stay as the alternate, and Counselwoman Fleming will be the representative, and then the clerk can just clearly send a message to SEMCOG, letting them know that that's how it is now. Is that work?
So I have, in November 2021, we appointed you, excuse me, Council Representative Emily Rorab, Counselwoman Rorab is the representative, and Counselman Soltis is the alternate. So if you want to change that, you need to, Emily needs to request to be the alternate.
So can I make the suggestion, I suggest that Emily Rorab here stays the, stays the nature, the representative, Soltis, Councilmember Soltis will resign as alternate, and I will take the flex.
And that's, that's fine, and then we can just send that to SEMCOG, assuming we...
We do.
Yeah, but we need to, okay, but the vote is not for me to resign. It's for, okay, so we're, so can I get a motion to exempt the resignation of Councilman Soltis as the alternate, and Sean Fleming as the alternate in his, as the alternate? Here. Or do you want to, I'm sorry, do you want to stay as the resident?
Your Honor, I, if this is the simplest way to do this now...
What do you want?
Your Honor, I'm perfectly happy to allow Counselor Fleming to become the Council representative of SEMCOG.
Okay.
And I've got a lot of board positions that I'm representing.
You do, yeah.
So I'm very happy to pass that torch. So I am going to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Counselor Rorab and Counselman Soltis from counsel and representative alternate from SEMCOG, and I will also make a motion to appoint Councilwoman Fleming to the council representative, and Counselor Rorab to council representative alternate to SEMCOG.
All right, thank you. Can I get a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I second.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Oh, sure, please.
Just to say, I was interested in that, too.
You were.
This was, well, yeah, I mean, nobody asked me, so yes, I can say I'm interested, because I can, yeah, I mean, I was, so I just wanted to say I was interested as well, so...
Your Honor?
Were you making a substitute? No, this was time for discussion, so, correct, so...
Well, Your Honor, I would put forward a substitute motion. I'm altering my motion to appoint, the first part is still the same, second part would be the point, Counselor Fleming as the council representative, and Counselor Wright as a representative alternate to SEMCOG.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so can I get, okay, so, okay, and so is there any other discussion? Is there anybody else who is interested?
Your Honor?
Please.
Not interested, but I just want to confirm that Counselman Soltis is wanting to resign.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's...
Just to, just to have it on the record, I think we missed that in the shuffle.
Yeah, that's, I'll be seated up here.
So I'm going to restate this. All right, so the motion before us is to accept the resignations of Councilman Soltis and Counselor Rorab from their positions on SEMCOG, and to, in their place, appoint Counselor, or Counselman Fleming as the representative, and Counselor Wright as the alternate. All right, so all in favor of this, seeing there's no more discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, say. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. All right, so I now invite closing comments. I'll start with Counselwoman Aaron.
Wow. That was a great decision.
You can only have to work together.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say, yesterday, we memorialized the 21st anniversary of 9/11, and, you know, I think about 200, 2,977 people that were murdered that day. And I say murdered, because that's what it was. But of that, it was 415 emergency workers, which 343 of them were firefighters, 37 police officers, eight emergency medical technicians and paramedics. And when I think about that, I think about the hard work that our firefighters and our police officers do every day, and our frontline workers, and yet they're not appreciated as much as they should. These men and women go out daily and not knowing whether or not they're going to come home. So we want to just, when we see a firefighter or a police officer, regardless of what you hear in the media sometimes, they are still someone's son and daughter, husband and wife, and they have a right to go home, just like everybody else, of course. And I wish that I had the money to pay them the value of their work, because many times they are the most underpaid people that are out here doing the hardest job. Then also, we have to do something about bullying and cyberbullying. There was a seventh grader last week from the Lanfair School District that ran away from home, and thank you to Madison Heights Police Department for fighting her and bringing them back home. But this child ran away from home because of bullying, because someone wanted to get behind a keyboard and bully this child, where she found it best to leave home, so that her parents wouldn't have to worry, or, and not tell her parents. We as parents, as adults, we have to set an example for our children, and let them know that bullying is not acceptable. Yes, maybe when I was a child, if you called me out of my name, I laughed it off, and tomorrow we ate lunch together. But we cannot keep on doing this, and kids are being harmed by this. Not just that this child ran away, but another child last school semester actually went forth and committed suicide because of bullying. And this is happening right here in our city, in our district. We need to stop. If you are a child, or as a parent, and you know that your child is being bullied, talk to them, allow them to feel safe, to come to you, and let you know what is going on, and not be afraid. And if you feel as a child that they cannot talk to their parent, there's an 800 number, 800-237-TALK, 24 hours, seven days a week, where they can talk to someone to help them. But please, let's take control over the bullying that is going on, so that our children can feel safe in their homes and in their community. And the last thing I want to say is that the Madison Heights Youth Association is sponsoring another motor in the movie Saturday, this Saturday, September 20, I'm sorry, almost saying my birthday, but it's not. Saturday, September 17, at 7:45, they'll be at the Ran Oak Soccer Complex. It's like a drive-in movie, and they'll be showing Hocus Pocus, and they're going to have, you know, concessions available, and the proceeds from the concessions will go towards the scholarship for the Madison Heights Youth Association. So that is all that I have. Thank you.
Give me your question.
Yes, Your Honor, so I'm happy that we're getting a few more bike racks in at Costco. I'm sad, I'm sad that they're not, you know, putting in some of the EV stations along with this. You know, we've, we've got a hybrid van, and, you know, we'll actually drive to the Meyer in Warren, because it has the charging station, and the first hour is free charging, so that's about the amount of time it takes to shop in Meyer, and so, and it'd be nice, as we have so much retail in the city, it'd be great to see that and the bike racks and all those things be a part of the future developments, because we're, we're not, we're not too far off. I mean, if you look at what 20 years from now could be, just look back at what was 20 years ago. You know, 20 years ago, there weren't any electric cars on the road. Now, it's like 25% of all cars are off the lots are EVs. So it's an interesting, interesting change. Again, glad we got the bike racks, hopeful, though, that each of these retail outlets start to see... start to see that there's a demand in this area, like what Warren did with that, with that Meyer. I'd love to see more of that in the city. Trail Tunes is coming up, really excited about that, October second. We're trying to Sunday afternoon this year, see what that does with attendance, it was good for a lot of our bands, so it should be a fun time. For those who've never been before, you owe it to yourself to check it out, and if you have been, you're going to see a lot of the same bands that you've seen through the years, so excited to have that happen. But in order to make that happen, Trail Tunes is one hundred percent funded by donations. Not a single dollar from the city council, and in our budget appropriation, goes into Trail Tunes. It's completely self-funded, it has its own even escrow account. So we're running a fundraiser at Mia's Tasty Grill on Friday, September twenty-third. It's running from five to ten o'clock. We've got performers from Trail Tunes, they're going to be performing there, and we're going to get twenty percent of all dinner, drinks, all the food and beverage that you buy will go directly towards Trail Tunes, but we're also doing silent auctions. And so I'd like to lay a challenge out to all of my peers cheering this fun table that we've got going on here. I want to see which of us can raise the most money for Trail Tunes with a silent auction item. So that, whatever that could be, you know, I know Councilman Soltis has done a lot for the, the Women's Club with the tea, raised a lot of money that way, and, you know, Councilman Fleming, actually, in, in the last year, we did Off the Trail to Raise Money for Trail Tunes, had a really cool zoo trip that he had put into there. So I'm not going to share what's going in, in my auction item, but I, I just would encourage everybody that can to participate, and let's have a little bit of a friendly wager outside of official business, who raises the most.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bliss. All right.
Hello, thank you, fellow councilmembers and mayor, for demonstrating a little conflict resolution with, you know, the seat and the alternate. Communication is what it boils down to, we did it. October is cyberbullying month, so everybody keep that in mind, and it starts with us. We have to be responsible in there, and we want our kids to, and be the example, even when we take people, can't see us, we have to be the example, that's what it boils down to. And part of that, I, this weekend, had a very fantastic conversation with a good friend of mine. A good friend of mine, where we talked about diversity, we talked about inclusion, we talked about the H R, H R E C here in the city, and one of the things we talked about is how our goal is to be inclusive of everyone. And for that reason, I don't believe I'll be attending next week, too, because of Rosh Hashanah. It's a significant holiday, not for me, but for people in our community and others, and if we are going to be inclusive, we have to be inclusive in ways that don't feel comfortable for you. But, I mean, I think that's the whole point of it, it's not for, it's not because it's for me, but if it's special to you, then it's something that we should consider. So that's all I have to say today.
Our report from the city attorney.
Before I move to, to Councilor Rorab, so as a Jewish woman who will not be here, because I will be offered for Rosh Hashanah, I appreciate that, however, I do hope that other members of council do come, that we do have a forum, so that the remaining four members will be here, because it's important that we do continue with council, which is a date everybody has. So, Councilor Rorab.
Nothing much tonight that I'd like to mention, other than the H R E C is, is hosting a native plant sale on the eighteenth, that's this Sunday, from two to five, out in front of the PlayStation, so please come out together. They're also going to, I believe, have, friends of library cultivated a native or a plant and gardening book sale component of the native plant sale, so please feel free to come out and get some fall plantings for your, for your gardens. We're excited to be doing that for the second part of the year. And I'm going to do what I can to get, do a basket for the thing, and I also have, fortunately, I'm not going to be at the Off the Trail event, because I am on the board directors for Relief Michigan as well, and we have our spectacular event on the twenty-third as well, same exact time, so apologies, but we'll, for the causes, so.
That's all, thank you.
I want to report that the Crime Commission had a great event with the Attorney General Kenan Nessel, who showed up and talked to about twenty to thirty people for crime prevention, elderly scams, elder abuse, consumer protection issues. She handed out some literature for that, and besides, with a postcard, which I'm trying to get some more of those, and have them at City Hall, and you can actually go there and get them. So that was a really good turnout, and there was a lot of information, some information that I didn't even know that, that was going on from the Attorney General's office. Also, the Crime Commission has an event on October twenty-second at noon, it's going to happen at Rosie's Park, and that's going to be a canine demonstration. So far, there's going to be three canines from three different police departments. Our police chief, Haynes, is going to be, has worked that out, and then I'm going to try to get some other food trucks, there are going to be there, maybe one or two, with some fall items, hopefully, and that's for that event coming up. And then also, this month is Suicide Prevention Month. I want to say, there's an organization called the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. It's a large organization that works towards suicide prevention, and they're going to be having the Metro Detroit Walk hosted in the city of Ferndale on, on October the eighth. So both those events, I'm going to put them on my own Facebook page, for my city council page, you can go there and check out the links and see the dates, and I'll pass it out to the city also.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of things. One, I want to thank council for approving the amendment with the bike racks. I understand that people might not get that you can bike to Costco, but you can, there's a lot of things that happen to pioneers, you can also walk there, you can go a while, there's a lot of ways that you can get there that aren't necessarily driving. I wish they were doing the E V, but, you know, we can only request so many things, and we need to be reasonable about it, so I do want to thank, thank council for doing that. I also want to just let our first responders know how much we appreciate them. They are the ones who are running into the fire where the rest of us are running out, they are the ones running in when they hear the gunshots blow, we are running out. So there's been a lot of horrible news stories lately, and, you know, we really need to, to be supporting our women who are, for the first two remain to vote, they have a last lead. Want to thank Councilman Fleming for reaching out to the AG's office last week, to have her in to talk about the scams, that was very informative, I very much appreciated that. And lastly, I just want to address the issue of Rosh Hashanah. Councilman Fleming, I hope I'm not out of line by stating that I won't be here in two weeks, I know that the Shermans will not be here, and that Mr. Burns will be stepping in. And I won't be here, because, because I'm Jewish, and so I'm going to be celebrating the holiday, and Mr. Wright, I appreciate this symbolic gesture that you're making in not coming, but if everyone on council does that, then we run the risk of, I don't even know what the term is, illegal term, but our charter states that we have to be here for two meetings, so we're going to have to reschedule the meeting. So if you're looking to do something to show support for the Jewish community, in my eyes, and I can only speak for myself, this isn't it, 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 if someone else doesn't show up because Councilman Soltis or Mr. Bliss, you know, they, something happens and they legitimately can't come, then we are going to have to reschedule, and all of us are going to have to juggle up our schedules to do this. This has been on the calendar for, well, really, for five thousand years, because that's how old the Jewish calendar is. And so I'm not coming, and I have come to council at the end of holidays, because sundown has been at six thirty, and council has started at seven thirty, so I have come to the meetings for that. This time, it's not. It starts on Sunday, it ends on Tuesday, I'm not coming. So if you want to show support, educate people about these things. Don't take the day off because you're trying to show support, there, and I can't speak for every Jew in the city, although there's maybe two hundred of us, but I can say for me, if council decides that they're not coming, we all have to figure out, we'll need to come. And I've got things planned for most of the days, so it's going to be very difficult. So thank you for wanting to show support. In my eyes, this isn't the way to do it. So with that, the next council meeting will be here on September twenty-sixth. Mayor Koteem Bliss will be sitting in for me, because I won't be here. This meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-one, thank you.